Go get it?
It's in the middle of the folders.
Can you be fine?
I think so.
Yeah, there's plenty of people around. All right, we'll call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Uh, roll call?
Here.
Oh, sorry. It's funny because one of my other meetings, somebody else does, says the roll call. So Becky Schwinger, I'm here. Uh, Austin Pratt.
Here.
Alice Pearson.
Here.
John Carlson.
Here.
Priest Martinez. All right, so first item for the consent agenda. Item number two is approval of the minutes from the February 12th, 2024 meeting. Anybody have any additions or changes? Somebody want to make the motion?
Move approval.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number three, discussion and possible action including acceptance of an update from Scott De Leone regarding the road paving project. And it appears that he is, uh, is he on Zoom by any chance?
All right, don't see anybody on Zoom.
Okay, so I guess we'll have to move that to next month's agenda. And see if we can get in contact with him to get him to come in and give us an update or one over Zoom. Okay, discussion and possible action regarding hosting a special joint meeting with the Eastern Region Town Hall on April 9th regarding the Shoreline Communities Area Plan Update. I think you're a little more versed on this, do you want to speak about that?
Sure, um, so I got an email and I did throw together a quick little written thing. So Michelle from the Community Development Department reached out to me saying that, you know, um, she had talked with Earth and they want to do a joint meeting. Um, I can read here what the actual email says. So she said, "The county is beginning the exciting journey of updating all eight local area plans in addition to the general plan. We are hoping to schedule a kickoff for the Shoreline Communities Area Plan at a special SURF meeting on Tuesday, April 9th if possible. We would also like to combine the meeting with Earth attendees as the Shoreline Plan includes both communities. CDD staff and the planning consultant, Placeworks, would provide an overview presentation, answer any questions folks may have, and seek public input about the plan update. We anticipate that two hours will be ample time. Please let me know if that is something that can be accommodated or if you have any questions." Um, so this would be, um, I believe it would be the day after our normal regularly scheduled meeting, that Monday. So we'd have a regular meeting on the 8th and then a meeting on the 9th. Or we could theoretically cancel our regular meeting if we didn't have any other action. But, uh, the request is for Tuesday, April 9th.
I don't know how you guys feel, just because if it's gonna take two hours and if we have any business to conduct, that will just make it a lot louder, a lot longer. You guys have any opinions on that?
I'm free, I can make time, so.
I think it's a good idea.
Do you want to keep our regular meeting on the 8th? Or, um, do both or just do the one on the 9th? The combined meeting?
Either works for me.
Yeah, either's okay with me.
I'm cool with doing both. I know that if we're gonna spend two hours with Earth, that's gonna dominate, that one item is gonna dominate the whole conversation. Um, so I think, you know, we did adopt a calendar, it'd be good if we could do it. The other thing that I'd like to point out, um, that I know that we had to discuss here with Charlie, I believe, um, they want to use our meeting location. Yes, just because they said that we tend to have more of a turnout, which is super flattering. Um, but, you know, they think that this would probably be the best location to host, so we want to make sure that that works for you guys as well.
Uh, I'm sure, so the Eastern Region's saying that there's more people here?
No, so CDD is saying that these meetings have been more regularly attended. I think in regards to this specific issue might be the point that they were making. So, so they wanted to do it here if, if possible.
I can, next, uh, next Monday is our board meeting and I can bring it up there, but I'm sure that would not be a problem. And if you have your regular meeting the Monday before, then if you have some kind of idea, I mean, because we could move the tables out, set up chairs, I don't know what kind of meeting, but we could sure, uh, I'm sure we can accommodate you.
Okay, so, um, if we approve it, I can let Michelle know and then let her know, you know, next week we'll know for certain about the location, but, you know, we, we want to do it, we're just.
And what, what, uh, what, do you know the hours for that?
Uh, it would be in the evening is my understanding, so I'm thinking maybe six to eight. I think maybe the time that our normal meetings would be, if that works for you guys.
Yeah.
Did you have a question?
Well, it was just a point that if we're going to get an update on the roads at the next regular meeting, that might be awkward to have to put that in with a Tuesday joint meeting. So I would be in favor of keeping the Monday meeting also.
Okay, sounds good. All right.
And do we know when the dates are given?
Uh, so it's gonna be April 9th.
April, so Tuesday, April 9th, okay, here.
Yeah, hopefully. Fingers crossed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We'll just put tentative, tentative location will be here and of course we'll, um, post, we'll post a, two agendas, one for a regular meeting and one for the meeting on April 9th.
And we'll bring that up next Monday at our board meeting.
Okay.
That'll shoot up at the post office too, down here?
Um, and then.
Just to be clear, you'll have your regular meeting on the 8th here and then the joint meeting on the 9th?
Yep.
And then they, okay, right up.
Yep. Um, and then the hope too, in what I'm trying to lock down, I need to talk to EJ after this meeting, is that after this meeting, we'll be able to finalize the Civisys thing. And then the emails that we already have, we can pop into Civisys, so next time we publish the agenda, it'll just email everybody. So as soon as we post it, you'll have it. Not that, I mean, we'll of course still post at the post office, but it might be a quicker way to kind of see that.
Yeah. Okay, any other input on that? Anybody want to make a motion?
Uh, move approval that we host a joint meeting with Earth on April 9th, 2024 to receive information from CDD and Placeworks.
All right, first.
My second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good.
Was that Austin or John? The second?
Oh, uh, um, John made the motion, I mean, second, right? Or you, no, you said Austin second, sorry.
Thank you.
All right, uh, so item number five, discussion and possible action regarding potential scheduling of a future date for another community cleanup day in Lucerne.
Okay, I'm glad I have a microphone.
Okay.
Are you pretty good? Tom?
What?
Should I get my phone or am I good?
No, you need a microphone here.
Trying to monitor on Zoom.
I just want to yell like when I was in the Army.
All right, so, um, good news, I got, I got in touch with Michelle Goodman today and, uh, she's gonna be out of town for the next two weeks, but in the meantime, all she needs is a date that we want. And she's, she said, "Sounds good, let's do it." So we just need a date in May. Last year we did it right, what, right before Memorial Day, right?
I think it was the weekend before.
Yeah, so if we want to look at a date, pick a date, I told, I told her that it was gonna be in, uh, together with SURF. Like, like last year I had, I had it on the, uh, on the little flyer. This year we'll make sure it's on there so that that way you all are, because it's in the town, you know, and I've been working with her last year and I'm not sure if Dan will be here next time or if he gets to watch this or see the minutes, he'll see that we're working on it. And, uh, yeah, so I want to make sure that if I have the date, I can get everything else set up in the meantime on that.
So is that, uh, was it on a Saturday?
Yeah, it was on a Saturday.
So Saturday, May 18th looks like the Saturday before Memorial Weekend.
Okay.
Is that something we still have to get confirmation back from her?
We probably would. And I, and what I do know is, um, yeah. No, that, 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 that might work, I, I just need to tell her the date. So what, you want a secondary date as well, just in case?
Sure. That would be June 1st if we, obviously Memorial Weekend would probably not be the best weekend to do it, so if we did it two weeks after, that would be June 1st, unless we want to maybe put it on there for the week before.
We'll, we'll shoot for the 18th, if she says no, then what's, I just want to know your second best so that that way it's, okay, let's do either June 1st or even the 11th, I don't know if that's ideal.
You guys have any preference?
I, I think either the, one of the, I think either one before the holiday rather than get, get on into June, uh, because, you know, the natural, you know, but I would say not the weekend before, uh, two weekends before, that would be my opinion.
Okay.
We will shoot for the 18th because you, you all have your meeting on the 13th, you know what I mean? And so we would like to have one, one planning meeting or just have people here to know more about it so we can gather. So I will definitely shoot for the 18th, but if not, um, we can, we can do the 11th too, if you like.
Are you guys fine with if 18th doesn't work out, then we can, um, do the 11th? So, um, we need a motion for the.
Might as well.
Anyone, a motion for doing the cleanup on the 18th?
Eddie, were, were you gonna be making up the flyers?
Um, I mean, I, I could just use the same one I used last time, unless you want to do it, I mean.
Um, you know, one thing that I noticed on the flyer last night is some things they don't accept, like tires.
Okay.
And, uh, like, um, leaves and branches, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
They, they don't accept that, so I, we don't want people coming up there with a load that they can't, they won't accept.
We'll make sure, yeah.
Yeah, I just think, yeah.
I think last time I just did it, I, I did it and I'm not good at stuff like that, but I, pack and mail will help me, so like, they've been doing a lot more for me now and now that I realize I can work with them, so they'll, I just need to give them the details and they'll just pump it out, so we'll, uh, we'll get that on there for sure.
Maybe we could ask the, the, the company that's doing it what, what it will take, what it won't take. That way people don't have to re-sell back on, jump in the lake or whatever.
What I'll do, um, is once she gets ahold of me, because I'm hoping that if I email her or, yeah, email her right now and if she gives me an answer, if during here, I'll let you guys know, so it's noted in the minutes. If not, I will email you and then I'll put potential date, uh, you know, like, or something like that. I, I don't want to put anything and announce it yet before anything's, you know, definitely in stone, but I want to make sure you guys know the actual date rather than, you know, so, um, so yeah, I'll text her or email her right now.
Do you want to make a motion?
All right, a motion for tentative date of Saturday, 18th, May 2024 for Lucerne Community Cleanup Day. Do I have a second?
Do you want to put the alternative, with the alternative date in there?
With the alternative date of Saturday, the 11th of 2024, May, do I have a second?
Yeah, would that be May 18th, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
You said, you said it in May 18th, did you?
The 20th.
Yeah.
Of 2024, sorry.
Oh, of 2024, all right, sounds good.
Uh, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Discussion and possible action including acceptance of an update from Supervisor Crandall. So, looks like you're on.
Okay.
I was just doing that real quick, but, uh, all right, let me grab this.
Do we have to make, do we have to motion to accept his?
So I think, um, last time I was on Zoom, I was glad I was able to get on Zoom with you all because, uh, the time is three hours difference when I was in DC. Uh, so I was out there with, uh, so I'm also serving as the vice chair for the Robinson Tribe and so I, I hitched a ride with them out there. Supervisor Sabatier and Supervisor Paisca went out there with the NACO, uh, National Association of Counties, something like that, National Associations of Counties. Um, but you don't usually send three people on things like that with county resources, but, uh, the tribe was going for National Congress of American Indians, so I hitched a ride with them. Uh, we ended up going to, uh, see a lot of our representatives and talking about the issues in our district and whatnot. Um, one of them that I emphasized on was the BLM, BLM, not BLM, I'm sorry, the forestry, uh, Department of Forestry, they're working on a grant with one of our local groups, uh, one of the tribes out here, but also the county and, uh, other partners like Clerk are all working to try to get this funding so that they can support the biochar program for, uh, for what to do with wood and whatnot. And a lot of our problem revolves around dead trees and whatnot, so I just, I didn't really know a lot about the grant because I'm not on the Risk Reduction Authority, but I did know what we went through. So I basically just gave them an outlay of what was going on, what I went, what the counties went through, um, what I knew. Luckily, um, the chair from Robinson, Chair Cromwell, was there with me and had been in the room with them on a different note, so, and because of Brown Act, I can't be in on it and everything, so he was able to elaborate from a different spectrum or a different angle to let them know, uh, what the, what the grant was for on that realm, I think with the Scots Valley project that they're doing. And so, uh, so I, I'm hoping it went really well, it seemed to go really well, they were really understanding and said, "Wow, we, we know a lot now of what's going on. We can't tell you you're getting the grant or not, but, but it was good that you came out and talked to us." So that hopefully bears some sort of, uh, help with that biochar. The biggest, the biggest issue when it comes to biochar is having a place for, you know, a lot of people burn, get their burn permits everywhere and things like that. Um, but you can also bring this stuff to, to a place that, uh, could, could do this, carbon credits, um, and also, um, you know, it could be an economic, uh, thing for the county as well, so. So that was, uh, so that was part of it. Uh, Congressman Thompson invited Supervisor Paisca and myself to a dinner on Tuesday at his DC house, so we were able to cover some, uh, some issues locally on that, talking about the different, uh, you know, not, they call them earmarks, I don't like saying that, but we, you know, we, we just talked about how they really helped us out on those and it was more of a real just getting to know them better type of thing, so, um, wasn't really like an official and he kind of told us about what they were voting on during that timeframe. I don't know if you remember, but they were impeaching like a, uh, someone that's in the cabinet or so, I don't know, something like that, so it was just really interesting to hear. Um, but all in all, um, they, they spent, I know Supervisor Sabatier got some information at NACO about some of the Army Corps of Engineers, uh, process, we're dealing, uh, also with our Potter Valley Project, um, there may be a way we can include them in on the whole Scott Dam thing, so some information came out of that, a lot of good connections and networking. Um, and then came back the next week, or it came back that Friday. Um, the next week I went to Sacramento with, hitched another ride with the tribe where I probably wouldn't have ever had a chance to go in and speak with the governor on, on the county's end. I, I, the last time I think we had a chance to talk to the governor on a county, uh, county forum was during the homeless timeframe and they were giving out the funding during, I think it was like 22. Um, and, and it was, it wasn't as, I wouldn't, I'd say it wasn't as intimate, so when we got in, each, each tribal leader got a chance to speak for a minute, I'm not the chair, so our chair got to speak, but luckily another tribal leader was like, "No, I, I'm good." And so I was like, "Well, I'll take his time." And I was just sharing with Charlie on what I discussed and it was, um, a lot of the things that were said in that room were, were basically revolving around the tribe's issues that are similar to a lot of county issues when it comes to homelessness and all of the other problems, missing and murdered indigenous people and I wanted to emphasize on, um, I, of course I brought up fentanyl because we know that right now, that's a big issue and, and I did tell them that we appreciated the fact that the legislation right now and, or the state legislators are trying to, um, you know, do better with the charges on, on fentanyl and the sales and whatnot, but we, they really need to focus, I said, I feel that you all need to really focus on the underlying cause, which is meth. Meth is like a slow drainer, a slow leak, people get arrested, they get put right out, sales aren't even, uh, aren't even issue, so people are emboldened to keep doing what they're doing. People that are usually addicted to meth are commonly the ones that are dumping in our hills, squatting in our houses, stealing catalytic converters, dumping cars on the side of the road, you know, all of those different things that are costing our county resources, our tribe's resources, the state resources, and nothing's being done about it, so I, I just really emphasize that. Um, and then also illegal grows in the hills, uh, the illegal cannabis sales in the hills because, um, those also are employing some of these folks and also contaminating even more and it's a drain. And my comment, my last comment was, I, you know, he has the National Guard at his disposal, so maybe he can activate them. I know as a soldier, I would have been glad to be on active reserve or, you know, to get some more time under my belt, you know, as a, as a reservist or whatever, but, and so he went into a spiel, I was just gonna listen to it with Charlie, but it was, you know, gotta, I gotta do a better job of transcribing it because I just recorded what he said instead. But, uh, but, but no, I just was, I was glad I was able to say that, he did have an answer, he talked about something with fentanyl, him working with, uh, some government to stop sales from coming in through Mexico or it's, and it's working and there's a lot of different National Guard, uh, units at the border, you know, so, I don't know, I didn't get a chance to research that yet, but he did answer me and actually you only got a minute to speak in that room with them and, um, well, you only had a minute to elaborate what you wanted, so I hit the minute and he spoke for six on my subject, whereas other people was like, "Okay." And so I was like, "All right, so either he is doing something or he wanted to talk about it, I don't know," but, yeah, it just, for me, like, I keep saying this to all of them, so anyone that I see, and then there was, I forgot to say this too though, but there was three different people that were in his cabinet that came up afterwards and gave me a card. We've already emailed, uh, talking about mental health, talking about, you know, things like that, so whether it bore fruit or not, we'll see, I, but I did get contacts, we did get in communication, so hoping that some of that works and, uh, just kind of highlighting how, you know, sometimes I can get into the room with some, my tribal leadership, uh, gives me that opportunity and I usually always work in, in both realms to try to help both sides, so that, that, not sides, but both, from both angles, they'll say. Um, let's see, since last month, we also, you guys are probably familiar with me talking about the Lake County Recreation Agency that we put together, it's, it's, it has to do with parks. And, um, and so I know that, I don't know if you applied for that one, Austin, did you apply for that one last year or was that?
I believe I sought to apply for the precursor to that.
Oh, okay, okay. And so, um, so it, it, it's comprised of myself, Supervisor Paisca, uh, two Lakeport City Council members, two Clear Lake City Council members and some staff here and there. Lars Ewing, Public Services Director goes to as well. And so basically it's to, um, bolster the parks, any type of recreation in the county and I think last year, I don't know if you all remember, I was, when we first started, I was a little upset because I'm like, "I don't know how we're gonna," because they were talking about supporting a measure for, um, for a tax, you know, uh, something to do with, uh, a tax, uh, measure. And so I said, "I don't know how you're gonna get the district of mine to want to do this, we can't even enjoy a lot of our parks and whatnot." So, but after further, further going through it, um, they're looking more at, um, they, they stopped with that initiative and they're just kind of looking at more how they can enhance what we have already and, and, and things like that and getting people to, uh, like so for example, the pool that's in Middletown, they're just looking at, you know, like doing enhancements there, things like that. So it's not really the high pie in the sky dream like it was last, last year when they're talking about doing a whole new recreation center in Clear Lake and then Lakeport and I'm like, "Are we gonna get people there, right?" So, but, um, but I mean, I'm sure that's the long-term goal, but they're looking at their own funding for that and then maybe, uh, if there is collaborative funding, it has to come from something that's like, um, uh, earmark or whatever from, from Congress or something like that. But in the meantime, um, just different, uh, enhancements in the unincorporated area and we're basically the unincorporated area. So, but, um, but yeah, so that's, that's, we're, we're hitting the ground running on that again, I was almost gonna come off of it, but I'm back on and I'm working good with them right now, so. Um, we did talk too about the Caltrans in different areas, we talked about the Caltrans grant, we remember last year, we mentioned that the CHP when Dan was here, the last meeting as well, well, the last one I was here, Dan talked about the, um, the crosswalks and so from what I understand, that's, that's going out to bid and it should be, it should be coming forward. Um, I'm in touch with, uh, one of the liaisons in Caltrans, Marty Soul, and so, um, so yeah, those, those are coming down the pike too, so that should really help. And it's unfortunate because it's like, we're, we're, we're having all of these accidents and deaths and on our highway, right? And so, um, I know someone also had reached out to me and sent me an email or a screenshot or something of that one meeting, I don't know if you remember, we had it here for the, um, Lake Transit or not Lake Transit, but the, uh, wow, they, they came here and they had Upper Lake, Nice, Lucerne and they were doing like a plan, uh, yeah.
Program?
Yeah.
And they, they put out, uh, uh, like, uh, you fill out what would you like to, what would you like to see and all kinds of things like that and then they explained some things like, somebody wanted to see a bicycle path.
Yeah.
And they explained that what you do on one side of the road, you have to do on the other, so there'd have to be a bicycle path on both sides at 20 and that that would interfere with the businesses parking on this side. Anyway, yeah, I, that was, uh, it seems like they ignored everybody's suggestions, but at least they took your suggestion.
Yeah, actually you sent me that, Austin. There was a, a copy of it or something like that when it took place, an area planning council, that's right.
I believe it was the traffic calming study.
Traffic, yep, by area, yep, and, and it just, I, I still have no contact or of anybody that's like, "Oh yeah, we're, here it is on the shelf, let's wipe it off and put it in." So, uh, but, I mean, there was a lot of work done on that, we spent, I would say, a year and a half or two on that, uh, and then COVID happened and I guess that's, I don't know, but I'm sure it's still there, but either way, the, um, Caltrans grant's coming forward, so that's, that's a, um, I mean, that's gonna help somewhat, we know it's not gonna solve the problem, you know? Um, let's, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but there's been a couple of summary abatements. Um, I know there's still a lot that could be done here in Lucerne especially, but I know on 15th they did a, they did one, um, they did a report on it two weeks ago. But, um, but yeah, just, um, code enforcement, I think they got a couple more employees, so I think, you know, not, either they're getting the training or they should be on the road now, ready to go. Um, I, I don't remember, I mentioned it last time, but they do have data ticket and all of that other stuff that's gonna help with administrative fines and, uh, ensuring that people are actually held accountable for their, for their violations, um, up to the point of Franchise Tax Board being a measure to, or a way to collect, so that that way that, you know, I mean, some people may not be affected by that, but most people will be, so that's another way that at least some people will be held accountable for dumping or being cited or whatever the case may be. So that's a, that's a plus. Now we just need to ensure that it gets tied to the, uh, to the garbage ordinance. Uh, that was done like right before I got onto the Board of Supervisors, the, it's called Ordinance 3078 and it's a garbage ordinance and it, and it basically specifies what could be in the yard, what could be in a trailer, um, wet garbage, uh, you know, it's all, it's all lined out in that. And so if you tie that administrative fines to it, someone can be just tagged and fined for it right off the bat. Um, a couple of budgetary items in the last couple of weeks too that I noticed that were pulled from consent, I think it was, it was because some of them were, um, were less and so, uh, we go through Jones Towing and then there's another group, but I think it was Jones Towing that we did the contract on and they, they enhanced some of these budgetary items from like 45 to like 90,000 because we're having such an issue with the RVs. And so, um, so just that was, that was noticeable.
Is that just for our area or is that?
It's, it was countywide basically for the whole budget, for the AVA. And so it was discussed in AVA and I, um, I, I was sure to ask that to make sure, to make sure that, and then there's a couple of groups we go through, so it's not just Jones, there's another, I think it's A and B, but they both had increases in their budget, budget, so that shows me too that we're trying to get ahold of that, because those RVs are the most difficult to, to get rid of, but, um, but in either way, it needs to get done, so that's the thing. Um, let's see. Potter Valley Project, uh, if you've been following that, um, so FERC, uh, was it FERC? No, PG&E had wrote a letter, uh, I want to say mid last month, yeah, the beginning of last month, because I remember the night before I went to dinner with Congressman Thompson, I met up with Bruno and Supervisor Sabatier and, uh, Steven and Matthew from the staff. Uh, and they had mentioned how Potter, uh, PG&E had written a letter saying they're not going to accept the, uh, water, uh, water plan for Sonoma and that little group they were putting together, so they're kind of left like we are. So we're still kind of waiting to see where they go with that, but in the meantime, we put something together, um, a letter to see, and we asked Department of Water Resources ourselves, State Department of Water Resources, if they'd help us with funding to determine the cost of what it would, what it would, what it would look like, uh, with Scott Dam removal, uh, because that was the biggest problem we've always had was, you are studying the decommissioning effects of it, but you're not studying, you know, the other effects to it. And so, um, in that we put in a letter and we'll, we'll get further in depth, we put um, in that, we put in a letter, and we'll, we'll get further into depth. We put like six different items to talk about, like, for example, the, uh, not stewardship, but the, uh, uh, actual sediment removal plan, economic plan, you know, how that looks. Everything that we wrote in our letter to PG&E, basically, but not to include also, um, uh, removal of the dam. And, and so what we're, what our goal is, if you haven't noticed, or if we have, I know we said it, is to show that it's much less cheaper, it's cheaper to keep the dam than it is to take it down, because they're trying to get people these grants. I know that Potter Valley, the, the actual town, there was people in Potter Valley, the Mendocino Inland Water was applying for a grant to put another dam in their area so they can obtain water. What's the point of doing that when you have the other dam? Just help us fix that one, use that money to, you know, so, so that was our, that's what, that's what our goal is, to show them, you know, let's look at everything from a, from a more broad spectrum, and, and stop this only focusing on decommissioning is the, is the, is the deal there. And we're, we're willing to accept the fate, but we want to make sure the studies, you know, show the accurate, uh, truth of what, what's most ideal, if that makes sense. Um, let's see. I don't know why I put that. Oh, no, that was, that was the date you guys put for the 18th, 11th, because I was gonna remind you that we are doing the garbage, uh, with the Waste Company, Michelle Goodman's her name that I'm working with. So, um, aside from that, um, I did talk to the sheriffs, because I went to their, they have, they have a fundraiser every year, and it was a couple of weeks back, last weekend, actually. And talking to the sheriff and the new undersheriff, well, he's the sheriff-elect now, um, about how things are looking still, and they're, they're still knocking on wood, they're still in the, in the right direction of training people. Um, our numbers, uh, are filling, or have, have been filled to a better, uh, you know, we were like 50% at one time, and now we're like climbing up to 85% in, yeah, like in, in different departments like Corrections and Dispatch. And those are the two we always talk about are the biggest problem, because without those being filled, then our deputies go back down into those positions, and then our catalytic converters are getting stolen because no one's patrolling, right? So, so that's, that was good to hear from them, and I always try to stay uh, supportive of them so that we can have that, and you guys can be policed properly. Either that, or, 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 well, Wasek's, God bless Wasek, but either that, or he and I are patrolling around and looking for people. So, uh, but yeah, that's all I have unless you have questions, and I'm, I'll be here for, for the time being as well.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Supervisor Crandall? All right. All right, and, uh, number seven, public comment. A citizen has up to three minutes to provide input on any item not appearing on the agenda. These items can often be further discussed on a future agenda if the Cert Council agrees to add it for a future item. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Anybody on Zoom? I didn't check.
Uh, no, nobody else.
Okay. All right, well, if I don't, nobody wants to speak about anything, then we'll go to item number, oh, no, oh. Greg.
Hello? Hi. Um, with, on, on 13th Avenue in Lucerne, there's a, uh, there's a old walnut, black walnut tree, that's basically right across the street from my house. And in the last storm, um, even before the storm, uh, big branches, big branches are, are just shedding off, off of the tree. And I want to know if there's any way that we could get that trimmed up? I mean, they don't have to remove the whole tree, but, um, there's like an easement from the sidewalk to the street. I don't, you, Becky, you're probably familiar with that.
It's on the,
Is it the one in front of the blue house?
Westbound.
I think Supervisor Crandall might be able to direct, direct us or you to resources for that, or who to contact.
Yeah, is it, so is there somehow that we could get that, that tree, um, pruned up?
Yeah, let me check it on the way, uh, and see what we can do. Because I, I don't know, I don't know what it looks like.
I'd be happy to go with you after the meeting.
Let's go ahead.
Yeah. There's a handful of trees like that that I've seen.
Yeah.
Yeah, considering, there's probably gonna be jurisdictional similarities, I guess is the phrasing here, because I am similarly concerned of trees which have been marked in some cases, but are facing, like, from, say, for this example, the public park here, the creek, facing outwards. And so similarly, I'd be willing to bet that the easement you're speaking of, I know that walnut tree, I'd be willing to bet.
Yeah, there, there's like a 10-foot easement from the sidewalk over, but, and, but the thing is, is the branches are falling literally right on the sidewalk. It's actually Marcelo's.
Hi, my name's Marcelo. I'm a, oh, 17-year-old resident of Lucerne, and I'm directly affected by that tree. Um, quite some big limbs have fallen into my fence and, right on the sidewalk. And kids walk by there all the time, and it's becoming a hazard, really. So, if you guys can do something about it or look into it.
Can you go on?
Yeah. That's about it.
Thank you.
You know what, I did forget to add one thing to what I was supposed to talk about, because,
and, uh, the, the Lucerne Harbor dredging, because I, before I went to the Parks and Lake Parks and Recreation Meeting, I always meet with Lars, and I always hit him up about Lucerne Harbor. And he says bids are going out. So we're looking at, you know, August, September, October timeframe for that. So, just so you know, it's, it's, bids are going out, so, yeah. Or RFPs, or whatever you want to call it, yeah.
Yeah. So, EJ, that.
Yes. October, something like that, September, yeah, yeah, yeah. So just giving you that, because I know that, I don't want to miss that, because that's important. We gotta keep our hand on it, our thumb on it, you know, so. But Lars has been really good about updating me. Even at the budget meeting, he gave an update as well, saying, yes, we have the funding, funding's still there, um, going out to bid this, this year, this summer. Actually, right now, he said he put them out, so.
Great.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm back again. I, I have another issue on the, on the, on 13th Avenue again. I, I don't know if you guys know about the, the recent fire. Eddie, you went with me over to look at the one house on the car. Did you know that, that that house is burned now? So that's the second house within, the, the house on 12th Street also got burned right by the gas station. And now, I'm not sure how many months ago that was, but I think it was, I'm not sure.
It was last year.
Yeah, it was, it was last year. I'm not sure what, what happened with that. I think it was vacant house, and then it was, I'm not sure it was arson or anything. But, but the last one that happened, I guess it was two weeks ago, or, I mean, that's very concerning for the rest of the neighbors, you know? I mean, that, if it would have been a little bit windy, we could have lost our whole street, and plus the, the gas station is right there too. And um, that's kind of a big concern now with the, the homeless, I think, are going in there, and then they're using it for, to do their drugs, you know? It's turned into a meth house. So if, if there's something we could do about that, I mean, because it's a problem now, that's two houses. And they're very close together too. I mean, they're only one street apart. So, maybe we could do something about that? The people squatting in the houses, and they actually robbed that house too. It was robbed like a couple of months ago, and I think the owner had actually caught the, caught some, some people in there. And then, I think he called the sheriff, but the sheriff said that they wouldn't come unless it was, unless there was some violence or something. But anyways, you know, and then what happens is, a, a month later, then the house is, is arson, so. Uh, I don't know. I just wanted to let you guys know about what's happening.
I have a couple of situations like that. Um, so I've been meeting with, um, actually, I have a meeting with County Council because of asset forfeitures. There's a couple of places in Nice. Nice and Lucerne are like, you know, like twin sisters, if you will. And so, um, they have a lot of the same issues, squatters, drug use, going into houses, stealing, you know, all that. So, um, and Clear Lake Oaks, believe it or not, has it too. And so, um, they're looking at a lot of asset forfeiture. So I'm, he and I are meeting about it. It's, it's been something that kind of, because of a lot of the activity we've had on the Board of Supervisors for other, like, legal, you know, like closed session stuff, uh, we've been waiting to have this meeting. So I'm looking, he, he had already confirmed with me, like, okay, let's set this meeting so we can talk more about it, because I have a, a group of people that are relentless. And, and it's not just, like, so I, I know you feel like sometimes you, you're like, I know you don't want to hear me again, but no, it's good that you're doing that, because there's others that have the same issue, and they're very similar. So we're trying to get into a point where, we're trying to get into a point where, sorry about that. Did you get it? You want to get another one? Yeah, so we're trying to get to a point where we can have something in place for people to be, you know, because I'll give you an example. The one that's in Nice, uh, gentleman is a senior. He's not really capable to do anything on his own, so he has caretakers, but they're not necessarily caretakers. They just say they are. And in the meantime, there's people going in and out of the house, bringing stuff in, bringing stuff out. There's people that drive by quickly with hands in, hands at, you know, of the window. These, this community has cameras and sends them to them all the time, and call the sheriff's deputies. And I'm pretty sure it's probably hand-in-hand with what you're talking about, right? Yeah, and so, yeah. So, and then when people are missing things in the town, guess what? It's like, well, we know, because we have the, but then there's that statement, like, well, I, you know, you know, I don't, it's, so I, we're trying to look at nuisance homes and asset forfeitures, or something that's gonna put this homeowner on like a notice, like, look, I know we can't prove this was a stolen hammer, or a stolen axe, or a stolen chainsaw, but we just see constantly this type of thing. I, there's, there's gotta be a way. So that's why I'm meeting with County Council to figure out. And these folks have tons of footage of activity, you know, all the way up to Spring Valley. There's another family out in Spring Valley that has the same thing. He's like, here you go. And he handed me like a hard drive of all this activity of people going in and out, people going and handing stuff in, you know, it's just crazy. And the sheriff's like, I, there's not too much I can do with it. I got, now I gotta find these people, and I gotta go and search for that. You know, so that's why also we put those flock cameras up like this, so that that way, they're another avenue for them to catch these folks. And they just renewed the countywide around the highway. So all the highway flock cameras have just been renewed. Ours are still in place. There's a couple that are gonna be repositioned, but in the meantime, they're still there. Uh, but I just wanted to let you know that that is something that's being worked on, because if someone owns a property and isn't tending to it properly, or is, I don't know what to say, but just like, I don't, like, they're just not holding their tenants accountable or whatever, there's gotta be something in place to hold them accountable. So we're working on that.
This is true. The, the situation,
The, the, the situation on, uh, David's house, it's, uh, 6289 13th Avenue, that, he had been remodeling that house. He, he got a good deal on it. He put all new siding on it, all brand-new windows, new sheet rock on the inside, rewired it. I mean, the house was very close to being finished. It was far from abandoned. But what's happened is, he had the fence around the house. They would tear the fence down, or cut the lock, go in, seal a couple of little things. I mean, there was even tents set up in the, in the backyard at one point. But, uh, you know, and then other people have, have, have their, their lake homes up here. If, you know, they, they come up a couple times, a couple times a year in the summertime usually. I mean, these homes are now targets now. There's, there's a few still left on, on 13th, and, and the, the one house that's right next to the behavioral health, and then the gas station that is, uh, 6282, that house is gonna be next. I, I can see it. It's boarded up, and I mean, it looks terrible, but the reason why it's boarded up is because they keep breaking into it. And, and she can't, she can't keep afford to keep putting windows in it. You know, they're breaking the sliding glass windows and stuff. And they actually did have a fire pit going in there at one point. That was about a year and a half ago. So we're lucky we didn't lose that house too, and that's right next to the gas station too. So, anyways, it's a serious issue with the, um, these people, they just come in and they take over, and if you ask them anything about it, they say, well, no, this is either my house, or they have permission to be there. That's what they say. I've even had it happen with you when I was watching your house. I had a woman come in, and she said, well, what are you doing? I said, well, I'm feeding the cat. What are you doing? She goes, this is my house. I said, get out of here. Come on. And that same, same person, maybe a couple of months later, did the same thing over at my house. I'm going, loading up my dog in my car, and, and next thing, I know she's coming in my front gate. You know, and it was, yeah, it's, it's just, it's getting crazy. So, anyways, I just want to let you guys know about these issues that we have, and possibly we could do something. I know, Eddie, you were working really hard. You've been, you've been really busy lately too, so, but, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
They, they came and removed, uh, they did, uh, what do you call it, summary abatement, and removed everything. They did, I think, two summary abatements with a similar situation, and the property's still, you know, now that it's been abated again, now they're going back. And it's the same thing, and the community is just, uh, they're in outrage too, so. I go to Clear Lake, that's the other thing. So it's, these are all very similar problems, and that's why we're working on that other aspect of it, to hold people accountable on that. Yeah.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, if there's nobody else that wants to speak, then, uh, item number eight, announcements. Uh, update from Charlie Bean regarding senior center upgrades highlights.
Uh, excuse me. Yes, uh, we were very fortunate. Uh, we had a couple of, uh, grants. Uh, and as you can see, we're getting a new ADA ramp in the front of our main entryway, and then the, you can't see it, but there's another one kitty corner in the back. Uh, and the grants, both, both of them asked that we didn't make a big deal until the projects are completed. And, and then, then we'll let you know, and thank them a lot, uh, who, who they were. And I'm hoping by our next meeting, the, uh, front ramp here, we're just waiting on the, the rails uh, for it, which they had to wait till the concrete was poured, they field measure, then they make them, then they get them powder coated, and all that takes about a month. So I'm hoping at the next meeting, uh, the front entryway will be done, and then I can let you know who we thank. Uh, and, um, that, and the thing, one of the big things about that is with, that brings us up to today's code. Uh, we were grandfathered in with this ramp, but it doesn't meet it. And by having this in, this will allow us to go after other grants, because we will be up to date to, uh, to try to get, uh, money for operations and stuff to, to keep the center going. That's about it.
Great, thank you. All right. Right, anybody have any other announcements? Any happenings going on in Lucerne? All right, hearing none, and nobody else is on Zoom?
Nobody's on Zoom.
Nope, okay. All right, then, uh, during the meeting at 6:48, thank you, everybody, for coming. And, uh, we'll see you next month on April 8th and 9th.